Continuing the practice that started with Mayor Gray when he took office probably about two and a half years ago, the mayor has been going ward to ward discussing and answering everyone's questions about the proposed budget for the coming year. So without further ado, I am very pleased to announce Mayor Gray. As he presents the proposed FY14 budget tonight, I believe you will see a budget that is thoughtful, progressive, and compassionate. I believe you will see a budget which not only invests in, but actually seizes the opportunities of the future for the district and its residents. So please join me and welcome Mayor Vincent C. Gray.
Thank you very much, Chris and Brittany, for such a nice introduction and for the great work that you all do in Ward 6. They are part of our Office of Neighborhood Engagement. They have been with us from the beginning, and they get kudos from lots of people in Ward 6. Thank you all very much for what you do. I am delighted to be at Logan tonight for a very special reason, and that is I actually went to elementary school here at Logan, K through 6. That would be 212 years ago, of course, at this stage. You know, it's really funny. I've been in this building a couple of times since then, not so long ago, about a year ago when we had a meeting here. And it's amazing the perspective you have. I remember this auditorium as a child as being immense, just couldn't believe the size of it, and walked back in here and said, "Really?" I mean, it just feels like it's about half the size, I guess, and maybe it is as an adult that has a different perspective altogether. Anyway, thank you all very much for coming out tonight. We have done budget town hall meetings each year of the budget once it's submitted. This is our sixth of this budget season. I want to thank those who are co-sponsoring this with us. The A&amp;C 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, and 6E. We want to thank all of you for being co-sponsors of this town hall meeting. In addition to that, we've got some individual commissioners. Brian Flahaven, who is the Chair of 6B. Commissioner Brian Pate from A&amp;C 6B 05. Commissioner Ed Kaminsky from 6D 02. And Commissioner David Garber, who is Commissioner from 6D 07, along with Rochelle Nygros, who is from A&amp;C 6E, she's the Chair. And also Tony Goodman, and I left him as the last Commissioner because he actually is the Commissioner for the area that I grew up in. I grew up at 6TL Northeast, and he has that as a part of his single-member district. In addition to that, we are being co-sponsored by the Mount Vernon Square Neighborhood Association, the Noma Bid, the Shaw East Central Civic Association, Mr. Thorpe, thank you for being here tonight, and the Southwest Neighborhood Assembly, thank you all. This may be the most co-sponsors that we've had of one of our town hall meetings thus far, so thank you all very much for stepping up and being a part of this. We have also with us, as he customarily is, our Chief Financial Officer. For those of you who don't know, our Chief Financial Officer has announced that he is going to retire. And as I've said to many people, the mistake he made was he left the date up to me. So while he is going to retire, it will not be effective until the year 2120. In any event, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with Dr. Gandhi. He has been a part of the Office of the Chief Financial Officer for 16 years. Three years as the Director of the Office of Tax and Revenue, and 13 years, which is just an incredible run. It's hard to believe that anybody would have the stamina to be the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer, for a city as complex as this is, because we are really four in one. We are a state, we are a county, we are a city, and we are a school district, all rolled into one, and all of those are rolled up into one budget. And it's great to be able to work with someone with the dedication, commitment, and talent that he has. Please join me in welcoming our CFO, Dr. Nat Gandhi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm delighted to be here with my colleagues, Gordon Macdonal, Rob Poir, Stella Hodge, and David Humansky. We work very closely with your first-rate administration headed by Alan Lu and in the Budget Shop by Eric Goulet. It's a great team to work with. I'm pleased to be here for several reasons. Most important of that is the budget that the mayor has put forward for 2014 is a balanced budget, balanced in a very realistic way, in that in budgetese, we call it structurally balanced, meaning we are not going to spend anything more than what we take in, we are not going to use our savings account, and we are not going to borrow more than what we can afford to borrow. Following all these basic principles, we are, as a city, press better financially than any other major city in the country, and Mayor deserves a great deal of credit for being where we are today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And these are not empty words. In February, under Mayor's leadership, we went to New York, and as soon as we came back, the rating agencies were so pleased, as soon as we came back, we got an upgrade on our bonds. That is remarkable in that rating agencies, financial markets are downgrading cities and municipalities and counties and states throughout the country. At that time, they upgraded us. So it is remarkable for a city that has experienced a great deal of hardship in mid-'90s, with something of $500 million deficit in our fund balance, to where we are today under Mayor's leadership, a billion and a half in fund balance, and that is very remarkable. It is remarkable, not merely in what I see in my books, but what I also see in the city when I drive around, no matter what ward I drive around in. It is remarkable in terms of the people who are walking into the city now, in late '80s, mid-'90s, people were voting with their feet, walking out of this city. Now, we are adding roughly 1,200 new people in the city every month. That is remarkable. This is the largest growth of any city, demographic growth, that has existed, and that is because of the extraordinary leadership that the mayor has displayed on variety of fronts, but certainly the front in which I am particularly concerned, that is the economic and the financial. City is on an economic roll with all the kind of money pouring into the city, and we are enjoying, as I pointed out, a very, very good financial condition. So I'm very pleased to be here, Mr. Mayor, and I want to congratulate you for distinguished leadership. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Gandhi, and thank you for being at every one of these town hall meetings. As I start this presentation, let me do what we have done before, and that is if you look at the capital budget by Ward, you will see that we are, in '14, we are spending $38 million, and we'll talk a little bit about that in terms of the capital budget. And then, over the six years of the capital budget, in Ward 6, we will spend $292 million, a lot of it being on schools, of course, over the six years of the capital budget. Our theme for this budget this year is investing for tomorrow, and that is a lot of what we're doing. You know, we were at an event today at St. Elizabeth's, and it was really uplifting because we have cast ourselves as creating, wanting to create, the District of Columbia as a technology center for the East Coast and for the nation. And it was, first of all, you know, we're proposing to put it at St. Elizabeth's, formerly St. Elizabeth's Hospital, the grounds which have now been turned over to the District of Columbia. But we had just an incredibly large number of universities that joined us today, including Johns Hopkins University, which is not in the city, obviously. But we also had a French firm, Sidlum, which we believe will be coming to the District of Columbia. Another firm called Smart BIM, which BIM is Building Information Management, which is a technology-based approach to designing buildings. And then, can you believe this one? A small firm that has headquartered in Redmond, Washington, that has never created an innovation center in the U.S. outside of Redmond, Washington, and that would be Microsoft. So we may have Microsoft coming to the District of Columbia to put in an innovation center here in the city. So we're very excited about that and the opportunities that may be before us. And that's one of the reasons why we adopted the theme of investing for tomorrow. The next slide helps to summarize what Dr. Gandhi was talking about, and that is where we are with our fiscal condition in the District of Columbia. This takes you all the way back to 1992, so this tracks about 20 or 21 years. And you can see the very difficult condition that the city was in. 500, at its worst, $500 million deficit in the fund balance. And then around 2000, it started to go up and went up tremendously until about 2006, around 2006, and then it went down precipitously. And one of the things that I ran on was restoring our fiscal condition here in the District of Columbia. And what you can see is that we have gone up. We are now at the point where we are equivalent to the year when we had the most ever in our fund balance. We now have $1.5 billion in our fund balance in the District of Columbia. And as Dr. Gandhi indicated, we were upgraded by Standard &amp; Poor's on our general obligation bonds from A+ to AA-. And that is phenomenal, because very few of any jurisdictions are getting upgraded in this climate where there's so much federal uncertainty with sequestration and the like. And what's interesting is it was Standard &amp; Poor's, not Moody's, not Fitch, that upgraded us. Standard &amp; Poor's is the rating agency which, a year and a half ago, downgraded the United States government. So it was nice for us to be in that company, ladies and gentlemen. We also have maintained our debt cap of 12%, and we have done, as Dr. Gandhi indicated, we've put forth structurally balanced budgets. There are no new taxes, no new fees in this budget. It is balanced on existing money that we anticipate coming in the door. It is a $10.1 billion budget. You'll see how it's deployed shortly. We know the sequestration will hit us, just like it hits everybody else. In February, we got the news that we were going to have $190 million of additional revenue, but it would have been $240 million but for the effects of sequestration. We expect to lose $50 million as a result of sequestration, so we've already factored that into our budget at this stage. So no new fees, no new taxes. We also have eliminated a tax on out-of-state municipal bonds, which is, I think, especially good news for those who live on fixed incomes, because a lot of these bonds are held by retirees. And then, we also had another area dealing with co-ops, where they've been double taxed. There's property taxes, of course, as there are on everything that's owned in the District of Columbia, which everything would be owned by somebody. And then, secondly, a possessory interest tax, which means these folks are being double taxed, and we have eliminated the possessory interest tax in this budget. The next slide tells you how we have gotten to where we are today over the last couple of years. First of all, by lowering unemployment, we have gone from 11.2% to 8.5%, which is a huge drop in unemployment in the city. We still have about 30,000 to 35,000 people who are unemployed, and through our One-City One Hire program and others, we are rapidly bringing down that number. We have gotten, under the One-City One Hire program, we've gotten 5,700 people back to work as a result. So the lowering of unemployment, the growing population, which Dr. Gandhi alluded to, and job growth. We have lost about 4,000 federal government jobs, which is to be expected because the government is shrinking. But in the course of it, we've been able to do what we set out to do, and that is to increase the number of private sector jobs we have in the city. We've actually added, since January of 2011, about 30,000 private sector jobs, so we've had a net gain of 25,000, 26,000 jobs in the District of Columbia. Secondly, our business taxes are going up, and that's because we are adding more businesses as we set out to do, and businesses are expanding. Those businesses that have existed, a number of them are growing at this stage, and we're adding more businesses. And then, thirdly, our sales taxes. And that isn't because we've increased the sales tax. We have not increased the sales tax, and we don't intend to. It's actually generating more sales taxes because we have more businesses in the city. How many of you all have been to Costco, the new Costco in the District of Columbia? This is generally the reaction I get everywhere I go. The first three days that Costco was open, we worked with them, and they opened on the 29th of November in 2012. The first three days, November 29, 30, and December 1st, respectively, they generated $750,000 a day in sales, which is absolutely phenomenal. And just do the math in terms of 6% sales tax, and you can see what was generated for the city. It really is consistent with our goal, one of our six goals in our Economic Development Plan, to end retail leakage. Who knows what retail leakage is? What's retail leakage?
Oh, where people spend money on other purposes.
That's exactly right. I mean, it's succinctly and accurately put, and that is people who choose to, they live in the District of Columbia, but they go to another jurisdiction and spend their money. And what we're trying to do is stem the tide of people doing that and keep them in the city. Costco is a good example of it. I go to Costco on a fairly regular basis, and the first thing I do is go around the parking lot. Anybody know where I go around the parking lot? Look at the tags, exactly. And what I've seen, roughly speaking, is that about half the tags are from the District of Columbia, and the other half are from Maryland and Virginia, which means we're not only stemming retail leakage here, we're helping to create retail leakage in other jurisdictions, because, isn't it nice? People are coming into the District of Columbia to spend money rather than going to Pentagon City, or, you know, Montgomery Mall, or White Flint Mall, and, you know, all the places outside the District of Columbia. The next slide shows you where the money goes. Of a $10.1 billion budget, 40% of it goes to human support services, which should be expected. A huge chunk of that actually is the Medicaid program, which is the public health care program. Our budget for health care finance is about $2.7 billion, which is a huge chunk. It is the biggest budget in the District of Columbia. In addition to that, we spend about 20% of the budget on public education, and then the rest is spread across the city government in terms of public safety, public works, economic development, and others. Next slide is here only to demonstrate to you what we've tried to do. We have met with virtually anybody that is interested in meeting with us. I've done a lot of the meetings myself, a lot of our staff, our budget staff, for example, Eric Goulet, who does a fantastic job of leading our budget office. Thank you, Eric, for what you do. And John McGaw. John McGaw, I call him the Capital Budget Guru. He has done a fantastic job, and he lives right here in Ward 6 also. So John, thank you for what you do also. But all of these groups that you see up here are groups that we met with before the budget was done, because we wanted to hear from people about what they thought as we put the budget together. And then, we've met with many, many groups since the budget was done, such as we are doing tonight. Now, the rest of this presentation is designed to demonstrate that we have done something that we really set out to do a couple of years ago, and that is, some of you were probably with us in February of 2012 when we did the One-City Summit at the Convention Center. We had 2,000 people who showed up for that. We had another 500 who were online, and we took that input then and crafted it into the One-City Action Plan. And what we have tried to do with this budget, because it's the first budget since the plan was finished, was to try to connect the dollars with the policies that are in the plan, and hopefully you will be able to see those. In fact, the first slide after this focuses on what was the number-one priority according to the people who were at that summit, and that is affordable housing. We are proposing to invest $100 million in affordable housing in the District of Columbia, which I think is absolutely the right thing to do. The $87 million of that will go into the Housing Production Trust Fund, which was a fund that was set up a number of years ago to be able to manage how we create affordable housing. $67 million of the dollars being generated this year in the additional funds you saw earlier, and then another $20 million in 2014. We have been faced with a very difficult set of questions that we had to answer the last couple of years to try to right our fiscal ship, and that is, do we put money in the Housing Production Trust Fund in order to be able to create more affordable housing, or do we put money into the Local Rent Supplement Program, which is designed to subsidize people who already were in affordable housing? Not doing one or the other was not popular with some people. It's one of those unfortunate things. We chose to keep the money in the Local Rent Supplement Program, because otherwise there are people who would have been evicted, because they would have been unable to pay their rent. And as a result, we did not put money in the Housing Production Trust Fund. We now have gotten to a point of fiscal stability where we can do both. We're going to put money in the Local Rent Supplement Program as well as the Housing Production Trust Fund next year. In addition to the $87 million I talked about, there's another $13 million that will go in for various and sundry facets of affordable housing. The Local Rent Supplement Program, which I just mentioned, the HPAP program, Housing Purchase Assistance, which is for first-time homebuyers in the District of Columbia, to be able to help buy a home. Rapid Re-Housing, $1 million, which is designed to get people who have become homeless quickly back to being housed. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, $1 million, which is designed, if people are at the threshold or at the brink of falling off, it helps them to pay their rent or their utilities, or whatever may be putting them in peril in the first place, so they can stay where they are. And then, we're putting $3.1 million into Victim Services Housing, but that's just a piece of it. That's for domestic abuse, domestic violence. We lost also $4 million in federal funds through no fault of our own, the cuts that occurred. So not only are we putting $3.1 million in domestic abuse services, we're adding to that the $4 million to replace the federal funds. So the district will be putting in about $7.5 million next fiscal year, all of which are new dollars for us, replacing federal funds, and then on top of that, an additional $3.1 million in order to be able to provide more services in that area. We also, one of our priorities in the One-City Action Plan is the overarching, improve the quality of life for all, is keeping neighborhoods safe. We are proposing to invest in police officers to get us up to 4,000. It'll be the first time in years that we will have had 4,000 police officers in the city. We are at a little over 3,900 now, and Chief Lanier has assured us that we will be able to hire up, so that very early in fiscal year 14, we will have 4,000 police officers being deployed. As we add population, as we add services, we obviously need to make sure we make the infrastructure investments so that the city continues to grow in important ways. For example, we have the Coast Guard coming to the District of Columbia in Ward 8. It is coming to the west side of the St. Elizabeth's campus, and it will be finished and open on August 31st of this year. They are bringing 3,700 employees to the District of Columbia who don't work in the District of Columbia now. We are creating, on the east side, a food pavilion and other amenities to try to get them to actually interact with the community, obviously to spend those dollars in the city, those sales taxes in the District of Columbia, and hopefully develop a relationship with the community, so it isn't just drive in and drive out and wherever you may live, which may not be the District of Columbia, have no relationship with the city. We're also investing, we're also investing in additional equipment for MPD, $7.2 million a year for the next three years, that will purchase new cruisers and other equipment for the Metropolitan Police Department. You're already starting to see new cruisers, I guess they're Ford interceptors that we are purchasing and putting into service. And in the Fire and Emergency Medical Services, $8 million a year for new ambulances, new pumper, new ladder trucks. There'll be around 150 new pieces of equipment that will be purchased over the next three years for $24 million. We're also investing money in our Fire and Police Cadet Program. We're trying to increase the percentage in both the Police Department and FMES of folks who live in the District of Columbia who perform these functions. You may or may not know that only 25% of our FMES employees actually live in the District of Columbia, and only 19% of our police officers actually live in the District of Columbia. So these are folks who live in the city, and we hope that they will live in the city after they become officers or become firefighters. I was involved, I was out, was it a year ago, Chief? A year and a half ago, when we brought in the first cadet class. We had 30-some young people who came in. We had 25 who actually got through the program. They initially made $21,000 a year, but after one year and they graduated from the cadet program, their salary was immediately doubled. So we had 19, 20, 21-year-olds who went to $42,000 a year, which is roughly about $20 an hour, which is not bad money for folks who are, you know, at that age. It's not bad money for whatever age you may be. And then, I've already talked about replacing the domestic violence dollars. We have replaced overall about $35.5 million in lost federal funds this year. Every jurisdiction in America has lost federal money, and we have managed to replace every dollar with our own local dollar, so we didn't have to reduce those services. The largest percentage of what we replaced was TANF funds. We have changed our TANF policy. Everybody know what, anybody not know what TANF is? Good, at least you're honest. The Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. It is the old AFDC program. It's, you know, called by some the Welfare Program, and it's the stipends, if you want to call it that, that are given to people on a monthly basis in order to be able to subsist. There are folks who get a cash amount each month. They're eligible for Medicaid, they're eligible for food stamps, they're eligible for Women's, Infants, and Children's Program, and I may have missed a thing or two. Did I miss any of them, David? Is that pretty much it?
That's it.
Okay. In any event, so that we can continue that program, we have now replaced $28 million of those funds ourselves, the federal funds that were lost. David Burns is our DHS Director. Stand up, David. David has done a fantastic job of getting us to where we wanted to get to. A lot of people don't realize it, but the District of Columbia never implemented the change that took place federally back in 1996. What happened was that the change was that said, "After five years, you are off the program." And the district, and I think it was done for benevolent reasons, said, "No, we're not going to do that. We're not going to push people out the door, so we'll pay for it ourselves." So the district has paid for those who have passed 60 months totally, when the program up to 60 months actually is federally shared, 50/50 program. So we have said, "We are going to make sure you get an assessment." We now, by the end of April, everybody who has exceeded 60 months will have had an assessment. People will get training, they will get employment opportunities, but the answer is, you got to go to work, okay? The city is not going to be able to support you for the rest of your life. We don't think that's good financially for taxpayers or you, and we certainly don't think it's good from a human perspective, and that is to keep people eternally dependent. So we are well on our way, and we've actually combined in the Virginia Williams Center the two populations, that is, the population of people who are on TANF with homeless families, because every homeless family, by definition, is eligible for TANF. homeless families, because every homeless family, by definition, is eligible for TANF. So, now they don't have two different case managers or social workers, they have the same folks working with them every day, so that we have a much more coordinated and integrated program. And we're not only going to save money, I think we're going to save lives in the course of it, because people will then have an opportunity to go to work, earn their own way, and hopefully feel better about who they are and what they do every day. We're also investing a million and a half dollars in homeless youth, a half a million dollars this year, a million dollars in 2014, and we actually, so that we could get this right, we delayed the implementation dates of moving people off after 60 months. So, it's going to take us another $6 million to be able to make sure we've got our programs fully implemented, including the assessments, which now are virtually all done, but also giving people a reasonable chance to be able to get a job. We also are proposing, I don't know how many nonprofits there may be in here tonight, but I hope you will, you will pay attention to this, we're hoping to create, we are proposing to create the One City Fund. The One City Fund is a grant program for nonprofits. It will not be administered by the executive, it will not be administered by the council, it will be administered by the community foundation of the city, so that we keep ourselves out of it. Because you know what will happen. If we're administering, or the council's administering, I'll say, "Oh, you, if you, if you get involved in the politics, you'll be able to get a grant." So, no politics involved in this. The community foundation is run by Terry Freeman, a longtime, experienced leader in the community, the foundation world in the city. They will, they will put together the RFPs, they will put together the proposal process, they will put together the panels that evaluate this, and those panels will make the decision about what nonprofits get funded. You can get up to $100,000 in a grant, which means that if we get the $15 million in this budget, we will be able to probably award, or they will, maybe 120, 125 grants, which will be fantastic for our nonprofits in the District of Columbia. The criteria, the criteria are rather broad. For example, one of the criteria is improving the quality of life for all. Now, if a nonprofit can't find itself in there, why do you exist? That's right. Get out. That's right. It will include services like education, job training, health, services for seniors, arts, public safety, and the environment. And again, the grant decisions will be made. We hope, assuming this gets approved, we hope to do the mechanics of it, or they'll do the mechanics of it over the summer, so this will be ready to go October 1st, when the budget, the budget year begins. The next area is, and I'm really excited about this, we have $8 million in the budget to be able to extend the hours of our libraries in the District of Columbia. I happen to think we have the best librarian in America, but then I'm biased. Stand up, Jenny. Jenny Cooper is our chief librarian. Who does a fantastic job. She really, the work that she has done is nothing short of phenomenal. We have a lot of new and renovated libraries in the District of Columbia at this stage. So, $8 million will allow us to expand the library hours, so that libraries, every library in the city will be open seven days a week. It will be open Monday through Thursday until 9 o'clock at night, and of course, will be open on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays as well, which will be a great benefit, one, to our children, of course, but also to our adults, because our libraries now are places where you can have meetings, and you'll be able to do that in a more flexible way, because the libraries will be open later. We're also requesting $2 million for books and other materials, and we are proposing, in this capital budget, in this capital budget, to do a modernization of the Central Library, the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library, which is downtown. It is long overdue to be modernized. We have, we have $103 million in this budget, and what it would do, because that's not enough to quite get the job done. But we're proposing, through a work done by Jenny, and by the Board of Trustees, and by some outside consultants, we're proposing to put five or six more floors on top of the library, which would create maybe living space, office space, would generate revenue that then would be pumped back into being able to pay for the upgrade of the library. So, if this goes through, which we hope it will, this would start very soon in fiscal year 13, fiscal year 14, and would probably be, what, about 24 months before we'd be finished? Jenny?
Hard to tell at this point, but as soon as possible.
About 20, maybe 20, maybe 24 months? Maybe? In addition to that, we are investing in this, in this capital plan, $16 million in the Southwest Library, which is long overdue to be upgraded. We also want to make sure that we take care of our seniors. Dr. Thompson runs our senior program. He obviously is not a senior, but he does, he is an expert in that area. He did a lot of work in this field before he came to work for us. We have committed ourselves to being an age-friendly city, and what that means is making sure that we continue to do what's necessary to keep people in the community. There are senior villages that have been developed around the city, there are some in Ward 6, and they kind of evolved on their own, and we've stepped in now to try to help support them, because they are a human, a more humane way, as well as a more cost-efficient way, of people being able to continue to live in our city irrespective of age. We also are, we have, or will have, 10 new staff who will go into our nursing homes, working out of the Office of Aging Services. What they will do is go into nursing homes, do assessments, and identify people who don't really need to be in a nursing home, and get them out into another alternative placement. I think you have seven staff already on board, and then we have three more who will be coming, so a complement of 10, who will make these visits. They'll make the first round, of course, and then periodically they will go back to look at the nursing homes to see who's in there. In fact, I assume that you're going to get involved in, maybe when people are admitted in the first place, to see whether they should, in fact, be in a nursing home. So, Dr. Thompson, stand up if you're recognized. And our Office of Aging Services headquarters is right here in Ward 6, right at the corner of 5th and K Street Northeast, in the old Hayes School. Y'all remember Hayes School? It was right around the corner where we grew up, right, Ronnie? And so, if you want to visit the Office on Aging Services, you can just go right over there where they are, right on the corner. The school has been completely modernized and is really in good shape. In terms of healthcare, we are proposing, well, this is more than proposing, we have been, we're investing $12.7 million over two years in working to save the United Medical Center, formerly known as Greater Southeast, and before that, known as K. Fritz Memorial Hospital. It has been teetering at the brink of collapse for a while. If it were to collapse, we would have a situation in which there would be no hospital on the east end of the city. In fact, there would be no hospital east of North Capitol Street in the District of Columbia. If you think about it, there is no hospital. There used to be, there used to be DC General, which is gone. What was it, Rogers Memorial, there used to be at 8th and Massachusetts Avenue, that is, that is not really a hospital in the acute-care sense anymore. So, there is no hospital west, east of North Capitol Street. So, we're working to try to save this hospital. In addition to that, knowing what the need is, we already are proposing to build a new hospital. This is a building that was built for 450 patients. Nobody would ever build or try to operate a hospital of that magnitude anymore, because one, insurance companies are not going to pay for it, for people for long, protracted stays. There are so many conditions now that people don't even go into the hospital for, or if they go into the hospital, instead of being a stay of five to seven days, it might be one or two days at this stage. So, you just don't need the size that we have over there. So, the proposal is to start the planning and site development with a $20 million request in the capital budget. We also are proposing to invest in the arts. The operating budget contains, includes a request for $250,000 to do a strategic plan for our arts programs in the District of Columbia. Also, in the capital budget, we are proposing to increase that from 2.7 a year, a year to $5 million a year. So, there will be $30 million in the capital budget that will go to create public art, and a lot of that would be done by our artists here in the District of Columbia in one fashion or another, to create public art. How many of you all know we have an archives, and I don't mean the National Archives, I mean our own District of Columbia archives in the District of Columbia? How many of you all knew that? Pardon? Nope? You talking about, like, the Carnegie Library? No, it actually isn't. It's in a place called Naylor Court, and a lot of people don't know where that is. In fact, people describe it as being in the alley, because you feel like you're going up an alley to get to it. And so, we are proposing to put $4 million next year, and then the subsequent two years, $20 million each, $44 million to create our own archives in the District of Columbia. We have artifacts there that people don't know about, the date back to 1790. And what a great educational experience would be for our children in particular, and also when folks come from out of town, places like Oakland, California, we'd like to take them to our archives and let them know what our District of Columbia local history is. You don't have to go to the National Archives to have an appreciation for local history. In fact, you won't have a full appreciation for local history unless you go to our archives, which will be cited in another building. So, we're planning to do that as a part of this capital budget. We also, and this is, I see Robyn Eve back there, we are proposing to invest in Noma, north of Massachusetts Avenue, we're proposing to invest $50 million in creating green space This will hopefully allow us not to become, you know, a concrete, have a concrete presence only in Noma. There's so much development that's taking place in Noma right now, that we want to be able to say that this is a livable place, that it's a place where people, you know, want to be, and they can enjoy the same amenities that people can everywhere else. So, Robyn Eve Jasper is here, and I want to thank her for her leadership in the Noma Bit. I was at the Noma Bit Annual Meeting, what was it, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago. And thank you very much for the nice piece of art that I was given there also. I appreciate it very much. And she does a good job of leading the Noma Bit. So, thank you very much, Robyn Eve. We have a playground renovation project that we launched at the end of last fiscal year. We put some money, we put $32 million, $30 million into upgrading 32 playgrounds across the city. It's the largest playground renovation program that we've had in the history of the city. We have 78 playgrounds, some of which are in great shape, many of which are not. So, we're actually investing in 32, plus a few more. So, somewhere close, half the playgrounds in the District of Columbia are being upgraded. The DPR, I don't know if Haze was in, I saw John in here. Yeah. Oh, there, there they are, back there. That's our dynamic duo, our Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and his very able assistant, Chief of Staff, all of those things, that's all of those, John Stokes, they are leading this effort on our behalf. What they have done, in my opinion, is nothing short of phenomenal. We announced that we would have this money towards the end of last fiscal year, around the end of September. They then went out and met with every affected community, had, got community input on what people wanted to see in those playgrounds, they then put together conceptual designs, went back out to the community, and shared those with everybody out in the community. And today, this morning, we were at Tacoma to have the symbolic launch of all of these, because the work is now starting to get it done, and every one of those 32 playgrounds will be finished by about midsummer at the latest. So, it'll be less than a year from the time we figured out how to get the money, to actually having the work completed. And of course, here in Ward 6, you've got Randall, and you've got Kennedy, that will Streetcars are coming, and they're coming in 2013, okay? Man, I remember going to a meeting at the Atlas Theater when somebody, I was asked if we were going to have the streetcars make a turn on 3rd Street and come down 3rd Street, down here, and, and I really went and said, "What, are you crazy? You don't have any streetcars coming down 3rd Street?" So, the streetcars are coming in 2013, they will be going out 8th Street to Benning Road, that will be the first line, and that is from 3rd and 8th, right near Union Station, out to Oklahoma and Benning Road, which is right near Spengard High School. I think we have, as a later slide in here that will show you what the car barn looks like, but that is a rep, that is a picture of one of our streetcars, modern-day streetcars. We have enough money in this budget, $400 million, over the next six years, to be able to get the first line done, to be able to complete the second line, which is Minnesota Avenue over to Georgetown, and then work on the historic Anacostia Line as well. As a matter of fact, next week, we will start the testing of the streetcar lines, and if you want to see them, they will be out around First Sterling, I think, right, right, right near, not far from Bowling Air Force Base, but off of Martin Luther King. Go out if you want to see them, I don't think we can let you ride them yet, but you can go out and see them at work, starting next week, not later than next Friday, so not more than a week away. We're going to continue to invest in bike lanes, $10.7 million in bike lanes and bike I happen to think that that will be one of our principal forms of transportation in the city. If you think about it, if you do the math, if we're adding 1,100 or 1,200 people a month, by 20 years from now, that would be 250,000 more people. It should be obvious that we cannot tolerate automobiles in the District of Columbia to that extent. So, we're going to continue to build bike lanes, we have a commitment, we have 56 miles of bike lanes now, we have a commitment to 100 miles of bike lanes in this budget, and we will get it done. We're also, we have the most robust bike-share program in America at this stage, and included in the sheer numbers, we have 22,000 members in our bike-share program, which we do with, you know, Alexandria, we do it together. And we continue, we plan to continue to grow the bike-share program as well. New York has now adopted one, Chicago's adopted one, I think LA is on its way, and just by sheer numbers, they eventually will eclipse us, but just remember, we will have always been the first in America to have done this. We are investing $2.7 million, proposing to, in the reopening of the DMV. This is our new and improved DMV. I don't know if Lucinda Babers is, I love to see Lucinda smiling. Where are you, Lucinda? Stand up, Lucinda. She has our DMV. You don't even have to go to the DMV anymore, we can do a lot of the, a lot of the transactions online, right, Lucinda? And we opened a new DMV on Rhode Island Road, just about two or three weeks ago, really nice place. The DMV in Georgetown has been renovated, it will be reopened on October 1st, or right around October 1st, and the $2.7 million is to be able to staff it. And we are investing, continuing our investment in Metro, $274 million in our portion of the subsidy, and $122 million in the capital budget for Metro, so roughly $400 million in supporting a regional transportation system, which we are beginning to, to expand. I am excited to, to report that, for those of you who have had, who've had to pay for your Supercans, you won't have to do that anymore. That day is over. The Supercans, some of them are in really significant disrepair also. I've seen some of them that had half of a lid on them, and so, we are, we are putting into the budget, we're putting in $2 million a year over the, in the capital budget, I guess that's, over five years, $10 million. But, all the Supercans will be replaced the first two years, so that'll be $4 million going in to replace Supercans, and then we are going to replace all the litter, the recycling bins, they will be made larger, the blue cans, you know, that everybody has, they will be made- made larger, and hopefully will get people more encouraged about recycling. We're also, we are working, I get a different story every day, where I get fully updated on what we're doing with our litter cans on the street. I actually thought that our folks were reporting, which I think is probably true, that we have some of these four-legged varieties that go up and go in because there's no lid on them. I heard today that we actually have some of these enterprising rats that eat holes through the bottom of our cans. So, we're going to have, I don't know, concrete reinforced cans at the bottom so they can't do that. And maybe, I don't know, I don't know how we'll figure to keep them out of the top, but that's what we're doing with that, the retrofit. For those of you who are familiar with Bloomingdale, we have found a solution to that. Our city administrator, who is in here, where's Alan? There he is, Alan Lu, our city administrator. He led a task force that has solved, literally, this is literally, this is true, a 100-year-old problem of flooding in Bloomingdale. And it will be completed, this phase of the project will be completed by next March, right, Alan? Next March? And that should be the end of flooding in Bloomingdale. It's a very innovative approach. We worked on it. They came in my office today and somebody told me that, I was told by somebody, we would have a solution by 2025. I said, "Nope, I don't think so. You're going to have to take about 10 to 12 years off of that one, okay? So go back and work with the engineers, and you come back with a solution that's going to have people..." I said, "Can you imagine me going to a meeting and telling people that live in Bloomingdale that we can solve your flooding problem by 2025?" I said, "That is an exercise in masochism." I said, "I'm not doing that. There's no way I'm going out there and do this." So you go back to the drawing board and you come back with a better solution, all right? And so, we worked and we have a better solution. And the first phase of this will be completed now within about 10 months. And then, there's additional work. In fact, the 2025 thing, when Alan worked with them, they got three years off of that phase of it. You ought to see this. You ought to go down to DC Water and see this piece of equipment that's going to drill these big tunnels across the city that will collect storm water. I have never seen a piece of apparatus like this in my life. It is the length, this is the truth, it is the length of a football field. And it actually will drill, you know, what are they, 20, 23 feet in diameter? 23 feet in diameter? Can you imagine that? 23 feet in diameter across the city. The first leg will be four miles that will go from where DC Water is down in Blue Plains up to the Nationals Ballpark. And it goes down, I think, about 80 feet under the river, under the Anacostia and under the Potomac River. And so, it will collect storm water. Again, the piece of equipment costs $30 million alone and was made in Germany. I don't know what the heck we do with it after we finish with it, but I guess we won't have to worry about that one anytime soon. We also are, we also are giving, for the first time in up to seven years for some folks, we are giving pay raises to our district government employees. And that includes not only those who are in unions, but it also includes those who are non-unionized. So everybody who works for the district government will get a pay raise. And the negotiations have been done with a number of our unions already. I think about 70 to 75% of the employees, including those who are not unionized, have already been negotiated with or discussed with and whatnot. And we still have a quarter of our employees to go. The negotiating for that is going on. Natasha in here? Okay. Is that right, Alan? We got about 70 to 75% already done? Okay. Sean is somewhere, I saw Sean. Is that right, Sean? Stand up, Sean. She's our Human Resources Director for the city. So, is that right, 70 to 75%? Okay. And those pay raises, once they've been approved by the council, will actually be effective April 1st. So it'll be retroactive to April 1st. The second of the three priorities in that, you saw the preponderance of them already, is to educate and prepare our workforce for the new economy. We are investing, or propose to invest, $79 million in public education for fiscal year 14. And our chancellor, where's the chancellor? There she is. She's a, you know, she was the first appointment that I made after I was elected, and what a great job she has done. She's not originally from here, but she might as well be. She's a graduate of Georgetown University and pretty much has spent her entire working career in the District of Columbia. And I appreciate the work that she does every day. It is a very hard job, to say the least. And we've had to make some adjustments because of enrollment issues for this fiscal year 14 budget, which I know is probably of interest to some of the people in here. We also, I made a commitment, within two months of coming into office, I made a commitment that we were going to create better capacity to serve children with disabilities in our public schools. We had the worst track record of anywhere in America. The typical percentage is 3 to 5% of the children with disabilities that are served outside of public education. When I came into office, we had 20% of our children with disabilities being served in private schools. It was over 2,200 children and costing us, the year before I came into office, $168 million. And I said, "You know, not for financial reason, but this is ridiculous. Children deserve to have a public education. Their parents deserve to have a public education, and they deserve to have a quality public education, and we're going to do better than this." So, we increased the formula, right, Eric? We increased the dollars in the funding formula that would create incentives for our charters, as well as our traditional DC public schools to do a better job of serving children with disabilities. And now, we have, I won't say gradually, we have brought that budget down. We've taken the money and reinvested it back in building capacity in public education. We're not at $168 million anymore. The budget for fiscal year 14 is $80 million, which means we've reduced the budget by $88 million. But more importantly, we have increased the capacity in our public education system to be able to serve those children. We also are making a number of investments in our capital plan for schools. This is a picture of what the new Baloo High School will look like. It is under construction now. It will have a capacity of up to 1,400 students. It will be finished in time for the school year 14, 15, and will be a great statement about the children who live in that area of the city. The bottom photo there, or rendering, if you will, is a topographical view of what the new Baloo High School will look like when it's finished. We are putting $488 million into high school modernization over six years, $169 million in the next fiscal year, and that will include Baloo, it'll include a new Ellington High School, and a completely, well, a modernized Roosevelt High School. What did Brian, $100 million going into Roosevelt?
106.
106, $106 million. It's a lot of money. And also, people have been under the impression that Spingarn High School is closing. Spingarn High School is not closing. Spingarn High School will be closed for a temporary period, and the purpose of that is to modernize it and convert it to a career and technical education program so that we can have more options for our kids who may not want to go to college ever, or may not want to go to college right after high school. They will be able to have a skill that will allow them to go to work. So, in Spingarn, in Spingarn High School, we are investing, I think it's $26.3 million, and it will create a curriculum in transportation as well as healthcare. Now, the car barn that I talked about earlier for the streetcar line, it will be right outside of Spingarn High School, on essentially the same grounds, so that the young people who are students at Spingarn will have internship opportunities by simply walking out the door and walking to the car barn, and will have those experiences. And I'll show you a rendering of the car barn shortly, I think we have one here. Anyway, we are investing in middle schools across the city. We're investing in the construction of a new Shaw Middle School, $53.6 million. Completing the modernization of Stuart Hobson at 17.4. Jefferson Middle School, we're investing 26. And Elliott Hind, 22.7, almost $23 million. We also are investing in Ward 6 Elementary Schools over the six-year period of this capital budget, which will be $988 million. That will include, and you can see the numbers just like I can, Payne, Van Ness, Watkins, Brent, Goading, Maury, Tyler, J.O. Wilson, Amadon, Ludlow Taylor, Peabody, and Seaton. All will get investments during this capital plan. I think that will probably complete virtually all of our elementary schools as well. One of the things that we're doing to try to keep young people out of special education or to reduce their experience in special education is investing in early intervention with kids. So we're planning to put in $6.4 million in fiscal year 14, which would be a $2.1 million increase. Now, this, what I'm going to say sounds odd, and I'll explain it. And that is, we are increasing the coverage from 50% to 25%. You go like, "Wait a minute, that doesn't make any sense." The reason why it makes sense is because we are now covering with special education intervention, young people, to do the assessment, who have a level of disability at a 50% level or worse. This would add to it, half of the children who are currently not being covered. In other words, those who are, may have a 49% or 40% or 35% level of assessed disability are not being covered. This would allow us to cover those who are 25% up to 50% as well, which we think will pay for itself because being able to identify those children earlier than they have been identified and get them involved in services, not only, it may eliminate in some cases the disability, but it certainly will mitigate, ameliorate those conditions because we've gotten them at an early point. We are working now on a truancy initiative program, investing $1 million in that, and maybe more once the plan is finished. And UDC, UDC has a new interim president, Dr. Jim Lyons, who's been in there for four or five weeks, and we look forward to working with him to really try to turn around UDC. And most important to me, to make the community college an independent entity, so it is now separated from the four-year university and the graduate programs so that it can stand on its own, and especially creating jobs. You heard me mention earlier, this next slide, you heard me mention the car barn. Those are renderings. You see the car barn in that first one, you see it, that's Benning Road is going along there, and you see the car barn that will be built right there next to Benning Road, and then Spingarn High School is behind that. And then you see it closer up in the rendering that is below that of the car barn. We are going to, as I've already indicated, invest $26 million in Spingarn, and then the $10 million will go into the design and construction of the new car barn. That will start in fiscal year 13 and will continue on until it's finished. And will actually be done in conjunction with the community college. The last set of bullet points deal with growing and diversifying our economy. We are investing a lot of energy and work in development. Our Deputy Mayor for Economic Development, who is sitting over here, Victor, stand up. Victor, costume. Victor has done things that haven't been done before, and I don't mind saying that. When I talked about the work that's being done to transform the St. Elizabeth Campus into a technology innovation hub, on my behalf, he is leading that effort and has done a phenomenal job, you know, bringing these firms in and getting all these folks who were there today, who are now responding to opportunities to be located there. I also said to him, we met, what, 26 months ago? I met him soon after I was elected, and I knew within a matter of minutes that he was the right guy for the job. And I said, "Victor, I don't care what you do, but we better get Skyland straight." That is the longest uncompleted project in the history of dirt. Believe it or not, people started talking about renovating Skyland, which is right between Ward 7 and 8, in 1989. And here we are now, what, 24 years later, and still haven't gotten there. Although, we've now swept away virtually all of the legal impediments. We got one that should be solved in a matter of weeks. We didn't expect this one, but it's not going to go anywhere, in my opinion. And then, we've already started tearing down the buildings as well. We're investing $18 million in relocating some of the DC Water facilities at the Yards. $18 million, that will have a $27 to 1 return to the District of Columbia because it will sweep away facilities that are blocking development. We know that there are plans for development. We want to work with the folks to be able to do that, to develop tax generating opportunities down there. Working to bring Poplar Point over to the city, which we're ready to start investing in the environmental assessment. And then MacMillan. Everybody know where MacMillan is? MacMillan Reservoir? We are proposing to put a medical training facility there. And you think about it, wouldn't that be conveniently located? We have the hospital center across the street, we have the VA Hospital, we have the rehab hospital, we have children's hospital, and right around the corner, we have Howard University Hospital. So why shouldn't we prepare our own people for those jobs and get them trained and make sure that they get a chance to be able to work? Because they always have openings there. We just had, what was it, about a month ago, a seminar at Trinity University to begin to start this process, which of course is right down the street from MacMillan. I've already talked about streetcars. We are proposing to build a new bridge that will be in Ward 6 and Ward 8, and that is to replace the Frederick Douglass South Capitol Street Bridge. That will cost us $622 million. It is a bridge that's on its last leg. How many been to Nationals games? Probably everybody in this room, right? And by the way, what's wrong with our team, man? What are we, 10 and 11 at this point? And we only have 142 more games to go. We'll be all right. Anyway, the bridge is right next to the ballpark, and it is on its last leg. I actually met with the Secretary of Transportation not so long ago, and we both have agreed this needs to be done. So, of the $622 million, right, John, $200 million of it will come from the federal government to help us rebuild this bridge, which will be done over a period of years. How many of you have seen our sustainability plan? And we only have a couple more slides. I would hope everybody would see the sustainability. We are really quite serious about this. We are dead serious about sustainability in the District of Columbia. We were out at the, I guess, the trash transfer station yesterday morning off of Benning Road because we are now starting a project in composting. They've already, they already have picked up, they picked up since April 1st, 177 tons of garbage that now is being converted into compost in a Richmond facility. And that will be used for, you know, nurturing our soil and our grass and whatnot, but also, it will eventually be a source of energy for the District of Columbia. So, we are working to move in that direction. And we went through, we asked the staff to go through the budget and identify sustainability-related initiatives. There are 200 capital projects that have a relationship to our sustainability goals in the city. It is a 20-year plan. I think we are now nationally in front, out there with the best on sustainability. And there's so many things that we are planning to do and already have underway. There are 143 discrete initiatives in the sustainability plan, and we already have 60-plus that are underway. Even though it's a 20-year plan, we are well on our way to being able to fulfill that. Now, although there are many things that we would like to be able to do, there are things that we can't because we just didn't have the money. And that is, we have this revised revenue priority list that we put together. I think it totals about $70 million of things that we would like to be able to do if we got more money. And I do think that we are going to get, we have three more revenue estimates this calendar year. One in June, one in September, and one in December. And this will give us an opportunity, and I'm sure the council will add its own priorities to these. to these, but this will give us a chance to do some additional things, some of which may not even be on the list at this point, like investing in infant and toddler slots and upgrading the childcare rates in the city at present. That would cost us $11 million. We, by the way, now have the most robust early childhood education program in America. We serve all three and four-year-olds. I was actually pleased to be able to do the legislation when I was on the council to create this commitment. And we now have enough slots across the city for all three and four-year-olds. What we have to be concerned about now is that there's some areas that have more kids than we have slots, and some areas where we have fewer kids than we have slots. So we've got to figure out, we've got to get the right distribution on it. This would allow us to take it down another level, and that is down to infants and toddlers, to be able to serve, I would like to be able to serve all the infants and toddlers in the city as well. Some of that may have to be means-tested, but it will get kids into programs earlier. Did you all know that 92% of brain development has already occurred by the time a child is five years of age? So why would we wait until, you know, we start school when somebody is five years old? I mean, talk about already left, the horse already left the barn, long ago, long ago at that stage. And by the way, just for those who may be interested, since I have the microphone, I guess I can advance my opinions on anything I want to, right? I believe, first of all, that we need to redefine school. I hear people, you know, define kids at three years of age as being in preschool. We need to drop that term. It shouldn't be preschool, it should be school. Kids go to school at age 3. That should be an expectation that we provide, and they'll pay off for us in the long run. Secondly, our school day is too short in many of our schools. It should go to 5 or 6 o'clock. And thirdly, our school year is too short. Our school year should be lengthened. You know what? I do youth town hall meetings. I've done 17 youth town hall meetings since I came into office. And so last July, I did one with a group of kids who were ages, I don't know, 14 to 18. And so I said, what do you all think if we lengthen the school year? And I expected to be, you know, like booed out of the room, right? You know what? That wasn't the response. The response that I got was, you know what? We could handle, we could handle a longer school day. That's not the issue. The issue is, what are you going to do with the extra hours if you have two or three more hours a day? What are you going to have for us to do? What is it that's going to be done that we can say will be really interesting and stimulating for us? And I thought that was a fair response. And frankly, America is no longer the leader in education internationally. We aren't even close. We're not in the top 10. We're not in the top 20. We are number 28 internationally in education, and that is a disgrace, ladies and gentlemen. And we are paying the price for it every day. So start them earlier, longer school day, longer school year. And I think that that will have a payoff in the long run for our children. And that commercial has been brought to you without cost by the Mayor's Office of the District of Columbia. So, you know, having now said all of that, I will open it up for questions that you all may have.
Mayor Gray.
How you doing?
I'm Eve Brooks from Southwest, and I want to thank you for your very courageous action yesterday in supporting small area planning in our area and the investment of money in Randall in the future. We are also very pleased by our relationship with your DPR department in want to reinvigorate that Randall Park area. We've had a committee working together with them now for quite some time. But there is a money issue here. We will need a city investment in programming in Randall, and there's a particular need in our neighborhood for the kind of space that site has. There are children who desperately need the kinds of programming that we can do in the small spaces that are there. So we're asking for reprogramming money for 2014, so that we can really create the kind of supports for our kids.
Okay. Our DPR director is in the house, so you heard that, Hey Sues? The issue was programming at Randall and maybe looking at how we move some resources around to be able to support additional programming staff, I guess, at Randall, right, Eve?
Yes. Programming and then money for the future.
Yeah.
There will be a, hopefully, some longer-term plans that come in the S's small-area plan.
Okay. Well, you know, I think you know, we obviously support education, and it was a difficult decision, but we ultimately decided that the most important thing was, as I try to do, to have the community weigh in on what we want. It doesn't foreclose there being an educational presence there, but it will give the opportunity through the small-area plan to be able to express that in the community's work that's being done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Gray. Marty Wells, resident of Southwest DC.
We saw each other on the elevator last week.
This is the best 30-second elevator speech I had. I thank you for your support on Randall. I can assure you that the community is going to put forth a purposeful and thoughtful effort into the small-area plan, and we won't disappoint you there. As president of the PTA at Amadon Bowen Elementary School, I want to thank you for your past support. The playground should be ready in two weeks, and thank you for your support there. I thank you for your support in this year's budget for the new windows. It's going to really make the property look fantastic. And now what I'm asking for is summer school and after-school programming. As you know, 93% of the students that attend Amadon Bowen are below poverty. They don't have a convenient place to go. Minor Elementary, apparently, is the summer school program designated for students in Southwest. If you don't have a car, that's two buses to get there, two buses to get home, and it's a half-day program. It's not going to get widespread support. In keeping with your year-long school, I'm fully in support of that, longer days, the aftercare and summer school programs really need to be addressed, particularly in schools with high poverty concentrations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marty. And again, it was nice to see you on the elevator.
I was riding that elevator for four hours.
Yeah, we had a nice conversation while we were on the elevator, and as you can see, I didn't miss the point of what you had to say that day. I'll ask the chancellor, do we have a microphone over on that side? Good. Ask the chancellor, she'll weigh in on the, now, after-school program.
Hi, Marty.
After-school programs could be eliminated if we had longer school days, couldn't they? See, we should take the after-school money and put it into schools and just create a longer school day. You could do some of the same things in the longer school day that you can do in after-school programs, and they could be done right in the same building.
Yes.
So at Amadon, sorry for my voice, in fact, Principal Miller raised the transportation issue. As many people know, we actually received less money for after-school programming this year, and so we're trying to stretch our dollars as far as possible. We can't afford to have a summer school at every single building, so we've tried to create hubs. Principal Miller at Amadon Bowen raised the issue with me just yesterday. So we're going to look into transportation potentially around the hubs to see if we can at least get kids there, absent trying to have a summer school program in every place. So we're working on that issue, and we'll definitely get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, thank you for what I know has to be scores of hours that are put in. PTA work is really hard work. It's, I don't mean to sound trite, but it is really incredibly rewarding work, we know that. But it also takes a lot of work, and not a lot of parents want to step up and do that work of being the president of the PTA. So thank you, Marty. Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Gray.
Good evening.
My issue is in Southwest, the Randall recreational site. I would like to see Cawcullin Gallery, the Small Area Plan Committee, KIP DC, and any other resident down in Ward 6 to work together to bring a KIP College Preparatory, state-of-the-art high school there redoing the recreational center. D.C. Parking Rec should be involved. Why do I say this? I'm a proud mom whose son would graduate from KIP College Preparatory on June 7th with full offers to college. Me being a Washingtononian and a 29-year resident in Ward 6, these opportunities were not there for me. But KIP came into D.C. and provided this opportunity to any parent who wanted it. We signed a contract, and they make good on that contract, guaranteeing your child to go to college. Southwest has never had a high school down there. We had many elementary schools. I just ask you, Mayor Gray, to consider this, coming to Southwest to help all the kids in the district go to college. We know now here in D.C., in order to get a good job or job period, you need a college education. Let's move forward and educate these students in the district through KIP, through Dunbar, through Bannaker, through Wilson. The D.C. public schools cannot do it by themselves. Look how many charter schools are here. I'm asking him to consider, and I want them to work together.
I got it.
To help the kids in Washington go to college.
I got it. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I want to respond. First of all, I am very supportive of a diverse approach to public education. I think people will tell you that I've been supportive of charter schools, and I happen to be a product of the D.C. public schools. And by the way, just so you know, Randall was a high school. Randall was a junior high school at one point, and then it became a high school. So there was a high school in that building at one stage. And in the early parts of the discussion, I was the one that said, you know, among the many things you're looking at, look at that building down there and see whether, you know, it could be potentially, once again, recast as a high school. The opportunity for a school to be there is not foreclosed. The small-area plan process will give everybody an equal chance to be able to work together, to be able to decide what people think ought to be in the Southwest area down there. So thank you for, you know, urging everybody to get involved. I will echo the same sentiments to get everybody involved. We'll have, you know, our public officials who will be participating as well. And I think at the end of the day, if we get full participation, we'll have a good plan going forward that everybody can embrace and then move forward in concert with that plan.
Thank you, Mayor Gray. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm a parent at the Capitol Hill Cluster School. I have a son at Watkins Elementary, and I'm a neighbor of Stewart-Hobson. And I am confused and concerned by the cuts that we are looking at to our operating budgets. It was nice to see the modernization money in your presentation, but I don't see the operating funds that our schools need in order to continue to grow and thrive and achieve. At Watkins, we are looking at losing four full-time staff positions, and at Stewart-Hobson, we're going to lose eight. Even though these schools experienced a one-year expected enrollment dip because of the restructuring within the cluster, next year, very likely, both schools are going to be fully enrolled, and we're going to be down 12 full-time positions. So I am confused about how it is that the public budget documents do not reflect those cuts in the way that they are experienced on the ground for parents and for students and for the schools.
Okay, I hear you. Let me start, and I'm going to ask the chancellor to pick up from that. I actually did not change or reduce the budgets in the past couple of years based on enrollment, which is the way it's supposed to be done. That's why those budgets stay the same in some schools. I don't know about Watkins, I don't know with that level of specificity. But there were schools whose enrollment was much lower than the dollars that were being provided to them, and we couldn't do that any longer. That's why there were reductions in the number of schools this year in terms of their enrollment. So in addition to that, and the chancellor can address this, we have what's called an enrollment reserve. Is that right, chancellor?
Yes.
That allows budgets to be increased if the enrollment goes up. I know that happened at one of our high schools last year, where they had a projected enrollment, and they were able to make the case, and early in the school year, they were able to make the case of an increased enrollment and additional dollars were provided. So I'll let the chancellor take over at this stage and provide the additional information.
Yep. So I do want to reiterate what the mayor said. I think a lot has been made of stabilization of D.C. public schools, and for the last two years, the mayor has held us harmless, even though we failed to meet our enrollment mark, and in fact, we've passed that on to schools. That's why schools who didn't meet their enrollment marks over the last two years, we didn't take positions away in the middle of the year the way we used to. We end up having to right-size at the end of the year, but even last year, we were able to hold folks constant. This year, in fact, we were planning for a larger enrollment. We thought we'd be able to keep somewhat stable, but in fact, when the OCE audited our enrollment, they came in lower than what we planned. In fact, we sent out projections in January to schools, letting them know what their enrollment target would be, and principals signed off on that, and those are the budgets that we were working on. In fact, when we got the enrollment shift at the last minute, shift downward, we kept the schools at the numbers that we projected and took the cuts elsewhere, found other ways to take the cuts. So absolutely frustrating and imperfect. I do want to emphasize that even though there might be, I don't know if it's 12 FTEs, but one of the things that we tried our best to do is preserve classroom teachers. So in some cases, schools are losing support staff or additional administrators, but we've worked closely with Principal Clemens. It's not our desire by any stretch of imagination to disadvantage our schools, but we do have a finite pot of money in which we need to operate. I do want to also reiterate that, as the mayor said, we keep an enrollment reserve, and so if schools go over their enrollment threshold, we are able to restore some positions. We're not able to restore all positions necessarily, but we'll continue to work with Principal Clemens and with the Stewart-Hobson or the cluster community to try to do the best we can within our finite pot.
My name is Mary Stevens, and I live in the 1300 block of L. Street Southeast. I think Sustainable D.C. is a praiseworthy document, and I'm very glad that you have put that together. And I like the fact that you're dead serious about it. And I also like the idea of making D.C. a no-car city in the future. My question is about the $20 million in this year's DDOT capital budget for seed money to build a road where the Southeast Freeway used to be between L. Street Southeast and the CSX tracks in the 1300 block. Now, when you look at the process, it doesn't appear that that construction will begin this year. And my question is, will there be seed money in next year's capital budget for them to build a road that's not needed? It's a road that fights all the Sustainable D.C. goals. It does not reduce commuters by cars. It does not replace wetlands. In fact, it damages wetlands. We don't have a neighborhood park within 10-minute walk of our residence, and this will increase pollution. So the Capitol Hill Restoration Society has sent a letter to DDOT asking why this road is needed. A&amp;C 6B has sent a letter to DDOT saying, we haven't seen an explanation for why this road will be put in that will last more than 20 years, which is when your goals are to be accomplished.
All right. I see our director from DDOT, Terry Bellamy, who is here. That is a level of specificity. I could probably give you a general answer, but I won't do that. We want to try to get you the detailed information that you've asked for. So let me ask Terry if he would come up and at least start the process of giving you an answer. We don't have a full answer tonight. I promise you that by Tuesday of next week, you will have an answer in writing.
Truly appreciate that.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. I have Nick Nicholson, my chief engineer. I think you're referring to Barney Circle, the study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just beginning the environmental study on that now. We're repositioning what was a freeway, and we look at that as a real opportunity to do a lot as far as restoring the greenness of the community, reconnecting the streets, doing a lot all the way over to the river. So right now, we're just starting the study, and as we go along, and we definitely invite the community to come out and talk with us on meeting those goals that you talked about.
Peter, how are you tonight?
Yeah, Mayor Gray, it's very nice to see you. Very impressive agenda that you've laid out. I'm sorry to have to play the role of little black rain cloud, but I am going to raise one of the two...
I'll be the sunshine in the room.
Right, right. And you do it quite admirably, sir. But I'm going to talk about one of the two subjects that I'm only capable of talking about, and that is going to be the school libraries here in the District of Columbia. You know, as you know, I've been part of a year-long, more than year-long advocacy effort on their behalf, and frankly, right now, the school library is in far worse shape than they were in the... And frankly, right now, the school library is in far worse shape than they were before this reform period began. If we had been spending since 2007 by accepted norms, by the norms that are used in our surrounding jurisdiction, our old school libraries would have 232,000 more books. They, all schools would have had at least 30 magazine subscriptions each year. They would have had access to 10 databases, you know, scores of DVDs. Instead, what we've got after years' worth of advocacy, after a school libraries task force that we suggested to the Chancellor, what we have is a plan that involves giving us half-time librarians in 61.4% of the schools and full-time librarians in the rest, and no plan for bringing badly-needed resources into the schools. There's no dedicated funding for school libraries. There's no plan to deal with a huge gap in our capital plan, which allows us to spend like $63 million, like we did at Anacostia High School last year, and open a school that does not have a single library book, and to go through a whole school year without any library books, and with the prospect of going into another school year without any library books. We're getting ready to open McKinley Middle School in the fall. There had been $175,000 in the budget to buy library books for McKinley. That money has been stripped out of that budget inexplicably. So, I mean, what I would say, Mr. Mayor, is that I'm glad Wall Street likes the fact that we have a billion and a half dollars in the bank. But, I mean, the fact is, is that we have this huge need. I mean, it isn't just library books, library resources. I mean, we need a million dollars' worth of new music instruments, new pianos in the school. I mean, we have this huge technological deficit in many of our schools. You know, and frankly, in this time of...
Worked to solve the one at Hopson.
You sure did, Mr. Mayor. And you know what I want to see? Is I want to see that kind of vision, that kind of focus brought to all of the schools that haven't had that kind of dedicated focus that you brought to us. And I mean, it was a huge, huge benefit. But the Chancellor, you know, right now, there's the proposal to have the DC Public Education Trust raise $20 million to deal with our library issue. Well, that, I mean, that's about what it will take. But the problem is, is that is a huge amount of money. And frankly, if I were a philanthropist and the District of Columbia came to me and said, "Well, you know, we want you to rebuild our school library system," I'd say, "You have a billion and a half dollars in the bank. Go pay for it yourself." And I, that's an argument that I'm sympathetic with. I think we have the resources to do this. We have to do it. And the fact is, is that I can point to scores of studies that would show that school libraries have an enormous benefit. So, I'm just wondering, yeah, what can you do? I mean, and why won't you take this on, sir?
Well, I think we are taking it on. First of all, I want to echo what I said earlier, that being the job, having the job of the Chancellor of the DC Public Schools is enormously difficult job. One of the things that she's had to cope with, you know, this year is the fact that enrollment did not go up to the extent that we, you know, we anticipated. And I want to give her credit for something in particular, and that is, I think for like 40-some years, we saw a decrease in enrollment. And we've started to see a turnaround in enrollment in the DC public schools, which will generate hopefully more dollars. And before I give her a chance to respond on this, we are doing something called an adequacy study. We've been working on it now for several months. The results will be before us in September. And the purpose of the study is to say, maybe the way we fund things at this stage, because we follow the formula, schools get money based on the number of pupils that they have and whatever the funding formula is, maybe the way we do that needs to be rethought and come up with a different way of doing it. That's what the adequacy study will tell us. And by the next budget cycle, we may have a different way. It will either establish the fact that we've got the best approach now, and we need to tweak that, or that the approach we have now needs to be rethought. I know they're looking at, you know, Denver schools, they're looking at other school systems, big-city school systems, to see how they are funding theirs. Some of them are frankly not quite as adequate as ours in the city is, and some of them may be superior. So I think, I'd like to come back out, once we have the results of that study with the Chancellor and talk about, and with the state superintendent, because it's OSI that really is responsible for setting these benchmarks, and talk about what we think should be done with the funding formula in time for the next budget cycle. So, Chancellor, I'll give you a chance to talk about the libraries and librarians and, you know, the other additional support services that support the classroom.
As the mayor said, until we have a different funding formula, we have to live within the parameters that we're in. Last year, I think at the DCPS Budget Town Hall meetings, we had a conversation about libraries, where I shared that I thought that our resources weren't appropriately allocated. And in fact, if we were able to do some consolidations, we'd be able to provide library services to all of our schools in the district. Well, last year, only 65 of our schools had library coverage. This year, as a result of some of the consolidation savings, more than 100 of our schools, and I want to say almost 99%, I'm just confirming, with our, we literally are having conversations with every single principal to make sure that this is the case, because we provided at least either full or half-time staffing for librarians for every school in the district. Now, there are lots of different ways to get there, and while some folks might want us to have a full-time librarian in every single school, we weren't able to get there this year. But providing 100% library coverage, at least 45 minutes for all of the children in our school system, I think is something that I'm proud that we were able to accomplish, even when we were wrestling with the decreased enrollment number. That being said, we've made other investments. Libraries aren't the only way that our young people get books. In fact, we've invested in classroom libraries, and so there are literally thousands upon thousands of more books in classrooms. Many of our schools have partnerships with libraries, public libraries, that are very effective, and we'll continue to work on this. It's my desire to have everything in DC public schools, from full libraries to subsidized study abroad trips, to technology. And I'll give a nod to the mayor for giving us $7 million for technology over this past year, where in fact, a number of schools in Ward 6 will see technology upgrades. And we've never had a technology refresh plan, but my chief operating officer has actually put together a plan where every three years, we'll refresh technology. So while we haven't been able to accomplish every single thing that we want to, I think within tight budget times, we're making some really good investments that our young people will benefit from.
Okay, thank you. Let's go over to the side. Thank you very much, Peter.
Okay. Mayor Gray?
How you doing?
Good. So, Tony Goodman, the ANC Commissioner for Noma. I'd just like to thank you for continuing to invest in Noma and Near Northeast. The $50 million in the budget that you put in, I mean, it's more than double what you tried to put in last year, which the council didn't agree with. I'm hopeful this year, the council will listen to your suggestion, and just like to thank you for investments. This is not, this is not the only investment that you've put into our neighborhood. You know, we have affordable housing under construction. We have, you know, a great new Harris teeter. We have new hotels. You know, a lot of investment, and I know that these parks will really help to bring it all together, make it a real community. So just like, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tony. You know, last year, as you recall, we really had a difficult situation in which the, affordable housing got pitted against the investment in park space in Noma. And we've managed to take that out this year. We're investing in the park space, green space in Noma, and we're investing $100 million into affordable housing. So, I'm hopeful, you all should express, you know, express your sentiments to the relevant council member. In this instance, who's the council member that has oversight on the Noma dollars?
It's Mary Mary.
Okay, okay. Express your sentiments to him. He certainly knows the importance of this in the city. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Brian Flavin, Commissioner, ANC 6B09 in Hill East. I just want to say first, thank you for doing this, doing these town halls. It's been very helpful, and it's been helpful to see how much you've gone out and shared this information. And I'm also appreciative to see all the funding that's being put into development around the city. Particularly, there are a number of projects that we're putting in significant money. One project where there's not significant money going into in this budget, which is a disappointment obviously to me and a lot of the folks over in Hill East, is Reservation 13 in the Hill East waterfront. It just seems the signal is, what is your commitment to developing Reservation 13 in Hill East? So I'm just curious why you never talk about it and why it's not one of your priorities.
I actually do talk about it, Brian. And I'm going to ask the deputy mayor if he would join in with me in answering this. But I think we put out for RFP, is that right? In fact, I know we did, if I have to think about it. We put out for RFP, the parcels that we said we were going to, you will of course recall, because you were with us when we had that meeting over at the Armory, where we talked about the view that some had, that we were trying to bring a Redskins, a Washington Football Team training facility there. And we put very soon thereafter the RFPs out, is that right?
Yes, sir.
You can talk about the response to that and what we're trying to do with Reservation 13.
Yeah, I would like to begin first with the attendance. I was with the mayor last night, and I also, Mayor, we had six staff people there, including my chief of staff, my director of real estate, so everybody was there that needed to be there. What we were presenting was actually the response that we received to the RFP. Unfortunately, it's a weak market over there, and a lot of people don't like to hear that. But it is a weak market, and if you had more real estate experience, you'd understand what that means, which means that there was only one response. We do RFPs all over the city, and we get tremendous responses, and they're not responding because there's no opportunity there yet. The one that's been presented, we're going to work with these guys, and we will see what they come up with in terms of their needs, and we will work through those. We do this all over the city, all the time. There's currently $3.6 billion under construction in this city, and I think we do know what we're doing, Mr. Flavin.
We'll look forward to continuing to work with you. And I tell you what would be helpful too, and I know this is important to you. You know, we've had a, we've had a building that we've owned over there now for, I think, over three years. That is the Eastern Branch Boys and Girls Club. And I would really welcome input from you and others in the community on what we ought to do with it. We bought it because we thought it was going to be needed as a youth facility. There doesn't seem to be that level of demand, and maybe there are other purposes to which we can put it around affordable housing or something else. But I would welcome input from the community and your commission in particular, Brian, if you could do that for us. And we'll look forward to continuing to work with you on Reservation 13. But I would not, I certainly would not conclude, me, I wouldn't conclude that it's not a priority for us. That's why we went ahead with the work that we did. You heard the response from the deputy mayor. The question now for us is, how do we, how do we increase the level of interest, you know, on the part of developers in the city? Because that is a barometer. When these RFPs go out, you know, they respond if they're interested, they don't respond if they're not. Again, you know, being at Walter Reed, for example, what was that, Victor, about two months ago? You couldn't even get in the room. There were probably 200, 250 people representing various development interests who were there. And we had nine proposers in the aftermath of that to be the master developer for Walter Reed. So, I would love, I would be happy to have our folks work with you to figure out how we can increase the level of interest. And also, I really would appreciate some feedback from you on what we might do with that facility, because as you know, you know this already, a building is sitting there empty. It deteriorates much faster when it's not being put to use. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, and I want to know what, I want to know, what plans do you have and funds have you allocated for affordable housing for veterans and who do not have the vouchers, job consideration, employment, training and education, and for senior employment? We need dental care for non-service-connected veterans. We need mental health services, and we need health care for women veterans. And also, what are your plans for the returning veterans from the last conflicts?
How many questions do you have?
Six.
Well, first of all, I think you know, hopefully you know that we have an Office of Veterans Affairs in the District of Columbia. Matt Carey, who I know was, and there he is over there. I'll ask Matt to join in with me in answering the question, and I would ask you to get connected with him and what he does with the Office of Veterans Affairs. But the affordable housing piece, which is the first one you mentioned, that certainly will be available, the money that we're investing. That is the biggest additional investment we're making in this budget in fiscal year 14. $100 million for veterans, not just for veterans, but for affordable housing in the District of Columbia, and veterans will certainly be included in that. I think, I think the answer is fairly, in some respects, somewhat complicated, because there may be veterans who have benefits that are available to them as a result of the service that they have given to our country. We have focused through our Department of Employment Services on employment opportunities for returning veterans. In fact, I participated, and Matt was there too, in an event that we did specifically for veterans, is that right, to create employment opportunities. And if there is a specific issue you have, I'd ask you to work through Matt with that, because you named a lot of different services. And the best way for us to do that is by having our Office of Veterans Affairs to be able to coordinate, to be able to coordinate those efforts. So, Matt, why don't you jump in and add to that?
Well, Mayor, and your administration, you're coming on board, you indicated that you do not want veterans to be collateral damage. So you're the only mayor in the country that made that statement, and you've stuck with it with a number of programs that we've put in place. First of all, the district has received with the HUD-VASH voucher program, which places homeless, at-risk vets in temporary and permanent housing, approximately 700 VASH vouchers out of the 999 that the Community Resource Center, the brand-new pilot program for the VA, received. In addition, we were able to give, so far, 153 of those homeless veterans furniture for their entire apartment. We got a donation of $1 million from three military installations. Terms of affordable housing, there's a potential project on the new Walter Reed site, which the mayor has indicated that he wants a veterans preference on that site and some of about 75 housing units, and that's being done by Help USA and Catholic charities with supportive services. In terms of jobs, we've had about four hiring fairs, and we have a projected number targeted of 100 vets working with our Department of Economic Development, who will be interested in retail hospitality-type positions. A majority of the vets coming through my office, interestingly enough, have not been Iraq, Afghanistan. They have been Vietnam, Vietnam-era and peacetime veterans. And their needs, most of them older, are ones that, are ones that have job situations that would not be your normal long-term job training. They'd be interested in more like taxi cab positions, positions in the hospitality industry or the retail industry to help supplement some of the income that they're already getting. Now, the VA has put the VASH voucher program off limits by Congress, which means that we will be assured of getting those vouchers over the next two to three years, which will meet the mayor's requirements to eradicate homelessness for veterans in the city. We're also going into the shelters. About 14% of the veterans are in our shelters, and they, we are hoping to move them into transitional or permanent housing. We also have developers jumping up, wanting to do housing projects in Ward 7 and 8. So, the other areas of concern, of course, are dental care, mental health care. We're forming collaborative partnerships with our Department of Aging. For example, on dental care, many of the veterans don't... For example, on dental care, many of the veterans don't know they're eligible for Medicaid programs with their income level, but if they go into that program, they can get 100% dental coverage in the District of Columbia, which is a big asset for them. In terms of women veterans, we formed a SWAT task force on that, headed up by Barbara Pittman in my office and Kathleen Hoppy, to deal specifically with the women veterans issues that we're dealing with, Secretary Shinsake on that particular issue. So, as you can see, there are a lot of challenges. Our budget is somewhat limited, but we have been able to do creative partnerships in financing to attack the problem. Thank you.
Well, you certainly have, Matt, and I'm going to say this in his, in support of what Matt Carey is, that he's one of the most respected state veterans affairs directors in the nation. We often get, you know, the, the Department of Veterans Affairs calling upon Matt and those in the District of Columbia to support efforts that they are engaged in, because they know the work that's being done. It really was Matt's initiative that generated, you know, the furniture that was made available for veterans across the city, and it was really an outstanding job done. So, I'm glad the question came up, so we'd have a chance to know what it is that you do in your office, Matt, and thank you for the leadership that you provided there.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Gray. My name is Felicia Kautz, and I'm a resident of Ward 6 in Southwest, and I wanted to first thank you for your presentation tonight. It was very informative, and thank you for the opportunity to take questions from the audience. It's been a long night, so I'll try not to keep you. I wanted to thank you, I was looking through the red booklet of your budget, and I just wanted to thank you for your commitment to finding an appropriate home for our charter schools. One, that's upholding the law, and two, it's very much necessary. As you're aware, even the prior woman's comment regarding KIP DC coming to Southwest, it could be a wonderful thing if it's in the appropriate place. And so, I just thank you again for your commitment, and also, Chancellor Henderson, for your commitment to opening up those unused D.C. Public Schools and finding appropriate homes for our charter schools, and leaving places like our public parks in Southwest open for recreational use. It's very important to the residents here in Southwest. That kind of dovetails a second question or request for clarification, if I may, with regard to Randall Park. I've, I've read in the materials, and you said tonight that Randall Park is one of the parks listed as to be rejuvenated or renovated among the 32 by either the summer or by the end of this year. Could you just confirm that Randall truly is on that list to be improved and to be renovated? When I requested and made the request, I was told the funding for that was on hold, pending our SAP, but these, we're talking about improvements to the playground, improvements to things that already exist, and I don't see why an SAP or a small-area impact plan in our neighborhood should hold up the improvements for Randall.
It's on the list, right, Jesus?
It is on the list, but, but I think you are correct in that we have paused that, because we were, first of all, waiting to see what the decision was going to be about the small-area plan, and we are going to wait for the small-area plan, just because it doesn't make sense to invest that kind of money, and then we end up doing something differently. We are actually going to work on, on getting the rec center up and running again for the summer to do some programming, and that's not going to wait for anything, any kind of planning.
Thank you very much. You are going to get the last word.
Yeah. Okay, hi, Mayor Gray. I'm Nicole Mogul. I'm a resident of Ward 6.
Hold on one second. On the charter schools, thank you for your comment. I should have mentioned this before you, before you walked away. We have a new deputy mayor for education, Abigail Smith, and she is now in charge with the responsibility of identifying all of those schools that could potentially become charter schools. A lot of people don't know that charter schools already occupy 34 former DCPS schools in the District of Columbia, and we're going to do more with the vacant schools that have been created with, for whatever reason, they've been, you know, they've become vacant. So, I just wanted to add that to the comments that you got already. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yep, okay, thanks. So, I actually am a parent of SWS. We're right over there in that building. You can see us. We, I, I actually moved back into the, into D.C. from Virginia.
Good for you.
I'm a native Washingtonian, but I've been saved from Reston, Virginia by, and I was actually really interested in the Capitol Hill schools, and I found this school, school within school. So, we're here tonight, a bunch of us, to first thank you and the chancellor for approving our expansion. So, we're, we're really touching on two, you stood behind two of your stated goals by approving our expansion, and one is the pre-K, early, early school, early elementary, so we're expanding down a grade, and then we're going to keep going up a grade, and we're, we're keeping, the second is, we're keeping kids out of charter schools or in the D.C. Public Schools. We're really excited, we're moving over to the Goding Building, so about half-mile east of here, and-
Yes, over near Sherwood Recreation Center.
Yes, yes, and we're really excited. We already started talks with DGS and DPR to work on a playground there, but, so what I'm concerned about tonight is that we are, we're asking you to keep our Phase 1 modernization at the original date. It was originally, in the 2010 budget, it was originally scheduled for that building for 2014, and now, that's, that's, now we're moving in there. We're at a really critical juncture of our school. The chancellor's really recognized us by providing space for us in an interim year in these portables, that we've really made the space work, but now we're concerned that our modernization keeps getting pushed back, and I think we're in the same boat as a lot of, as some of the other modernizations. And so, my question tonight is, what can you do to help us move the modernization up, which is what we need, rather than keep pushing it down the road?
We have our, our budget director for our capital projects, John McGaw, who's here, who happens to be a Ward 6 resident also. He's, he's sitting right there. Let me ask John to respond to that, so we know when it is, and then we sort of start trying to figure out whether there's something that we can do.
The budget is currently scheduled to provide for Phase 1 modernization in 2016 and a Phase 2 modernization in 2019. The District of Columbia Public Schools, in consultation with the Department of General Services, which is also represented here tonight, evaluates all the various needs of the many schools that we're working to improve, and makes tough decisions in this, within the overall scope of keeping our capital budget balanced and under, where our debt service on the borrowing is less than 12% of our annual gross fund, gross general fund expenditures. So, we're limited in what we can do financially, and they make those decisions based on the best information they have. And in the process of consolidating schools, moving student bodies around, there are a lot of moving parts. So, I'll be sure to confer with the chancellor and the Director of General Services and see exactly what the issues are that might need to be addressed. I believe there is to be some money spent this summer, not a lot, but some, on preparing the school for a new group of students who'll be coming in, different from the students who are there, in terms of their age and all sorts of things. So, we'll continue to look at it and work with you, and we're excited about the possibility of building the playground as well, since it doesn't have a playground now, but we'll keep looking at it. And if there's anything you want to add?
No, I'm happy to keep looking at it with you.
Okay.
John, how much, how much, how much is the Phase 1 modernization?
The Phase 1 in here is a little over $8 million, and the Phase 2 is 4.6.
Okay, so, and that's for Goding?
Yes.
Okay. Let us, let us get through this budget cycle. Let, let us continue to work with you. Are you the spokesperson person for, for your group? Okay. Make sure that we have the information.
We have, we have, we know how to get in touch with him.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do, we, while it is a six-year capital plan, we reformulate it every year, so in October, we'll start formulating the 2015 through 2020 six-year plan. So, it's conceivable that if it's determined the 2016 spending should be moved up to 2015, we can consider that in the fall.
When are you slated to move in over there?
This summer.
This summer. Okay, let us, let us continue to work with you on this. We'll see if we can figure out something. Thank you. Thank you, Ward 6, for coming out tonight. We appreciate it very much.